For Tuesday, May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Is it? Okay. Want me to do that again? We all think we're in charge until the technology takes over. Okay, we're good? No? Not yet? We ought to have like a Jeopardy!
Yeah.
Clock running right now? Oh, now we're live. All right. So again, welcome everybody to the Planning and Zoning Commissioner regular meeting for Tuesday, May twentieth. We have convened. So I'm going to start by asking everybody to join me in prayer. So please rise. Dear God, we pray that you will bless and guide us through this meeting. Help us to have productive discussions that will broaden our perspectives. Help us to resolve any disputes gracefully and find principles that we can agree upon. Help us to generate good plans that are practical, sustainable, and easily implemented. Guide us towards the best way to take action to accomplish the goals of our city. In your name we pray. Amen. Please join me in the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. God bless Texas. Okay, welcome everybody this evening. Before we get started, I'm going to ask the city administrator or city manager acting to introduce our new city planner.
Absolutely. I am happy to say that Peyton Sherman is on day seven with us as our new city planner. He is sitting directly across the room from me. Peyton comes to us with experience from Frisco and South Lake, Texas. So let's welcome him.
Welcome. And we're glad you're here. Okay, with that, I'm going to move on to citizens' comments. And during those citizens' comments should include any comments that our public wants to make relative to the application to change the zoning for the designated agricultural district to a planned development district for fifty-two residential lots that's located on property located on Dow Road. And that is CAD ID twenty-twelve zero-three-zero-eight-five-four-one-two-eight-five-four-one-three and two-seven-zero-one-one. So, Carlos.
All right. Hi, my name's Carlos Ross. Me and my wife Alicia live at three-seventeen Fizzitt Hill, Rockwall, Texas. And reviewing the notice that I got in the mail, seeing that these are one-negger lots, I'd like to start off by saying that my wife and I are not opposed to that plan. The builder has reached out to us on their thoughts to preserve privacy for us and also for their future residents, what I see as a plus. They have also listened to our concerns when it comes to water and drainage, which I'll just list here now, it's just a couple. Just drainage due to the amount of slope. We're just at the bottom of the hill. And then also the preserving the water source, the amount of water that comes in for the livestock that's on the land out there. So that's like the main, there's a pond there and that's just the main water source there. So basically positive experience with the builder reaching out and listening to our concerns and also kind of showing us kind of their plan for development out there. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you very much, sir. Any other citizens with comments about this or about this specific development or any others? No? Okay. With that, we'll close item four, move on to item five, approval of minutes for March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes from the meeting on March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
A second? Okay, great. I have a motion, a second. Any discussion about the minutes? Any corrections? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Show that as unanimous. All right, thank you. With that, we're going to move on to item six, which is another public hearing, to receive comments on the following ordinance amendment. Article three, permitted use, section three dot one, use of land and buildings, the land use table by changing restaurant without alcohol sale from permitted by special use permit to use by right slash permit use. Any, anyone make any comments concerning this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And with that, move on to item seven dot one, which will be consider for the approval of the ordinance amendment to article three, permitted uses, section three dot one or three dash one, use of land and buildings, the land use table by changing restaurants without alcohol sales from permitted by special use permit to use by right slash permitted use. Now, I'll turn this over to the city manager for her comments.
Thank you, Mark and Commissioners. Years ago, when this chart was put together by this city, we didn't have a lot of commercial development. We didn't even have a lot even considering moving this way. As you can see, as you drove to City Hall today, that is not the case. And we are getting more and more interest in commercial development on Highway two-oh-five. So when you shop and think about a donut shop, if a donut shop wants to come here, they would have to come before P and Z and council for a specific use permit because they fall under restaurants without alcohol sales. Little bit silly, little bit time-consuming, and just not really real user-friendly. So we are proposing that it be changed tonight from an SUP to a permitted use in general business only.
All right, with that, do I have a motion for approval? Okay, a second? Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. With that, any discussion? Any questions for the city manager? Okay, with that, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of recommending to city council that we accept this change, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item seven dot two, which is consider the approval of an existing, approval, excuse me, consider the approval of a plat, replat, from two existing lots that provide the creation of one general business lot on six-point-one-six acres of land located generally at three-one-one State Highway two-oh-five with frontage on State Highway two-oh-five. The CAD ID number for this property is sixteen-eight-two-four and sixteen-eight-two-five. And with that, I'm going to ask for staff report.
Mr. Chair, Mike Coker representing the city. This is a replat of two existing lots that you may recall earlier this year, maybe late last year, we changed the zoning, it used to be just GB on the front, three hundred feet or so, and we changed the zoning to GB for the entirety of those two lots, which makes up the six-point-one-six acres. And as a result of that, the applicant has requested to consolidate those two existing lots, so he has one large developable lot for GB uses. Your next case is going to be the site plan that they proposed for that, and I'd be glad to answer this application. We worked with the applicant on getting it to where we want it, and he has submitted the document in accordance with our rules and regulations, and we recommend approval.
All right, thank you, Mr. Coker. Is the applicant here? Any comments you want to make, sir? On about the replat? Nope? Okay, just wanted to give you the opportunity. All right, thank you. With that, I'll ask for a motion for approval.
I make a motion to approve it.
Okay, a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. Any questions? No? Nothing? All right. With that, call for the vote to approve the replat. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Show that unanimous. And with that, we'll move on to item seven dot three, which is to consider the approval of a site plan for the two existing lots, now just been replatted to one lot, that provides for the creation of a general business lot on six-point-one-six acres of land located generally at State Highway three-one-one, State Highway two-oh-five with frontage on State Highway two-oh-five. Again, the CAD ID for those two lots is sixteen-eight-two-four and sixteen-eight-two-five. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Coker for comments.
Nope, to Peyton.
This one's my turn. Good evening.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Good deal.
First time.
Yeah.
We're starting early.
It's my only case.
All right. Okay, Peyton, over to you.
Like Mr. Coker said, this site plan is associated with the replat that we just considered. The city staff is recommending conditional approval contingent on the applicant addressing all items included in the staff report. I have added a fifth stipulation in, that is outside of the staff report, and it is as follows. The applicant is to specify further parking requirements with the associated land uses within the actual building footprints for subsection six-point-seven of the zoning ordinance. And with that, I am providing a conditional approval to the board.
Recommendation.
Recommendation. My apologies.
Thank you. No, 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 I just want to keep everything straight. Okay, with that, I'm going to ask for a motion from the commission.
I recommend approval.
Okay, I have a motion for approval, for conditional approval, conditional approval.
Yeah, and I'll do that so we can open the discussion. I'll second it.
Okay, all right. So with that, we'll move on to discussion. Before we, I'll invite, because I assume the commissioner's going to have some questions, so I'm going to invite the developer to come on up or developers representative. Okay, so I'll just start. Start with Mr. Rhodey, you got anything for us?
Yes, I do. Do you have a time or a date for item one, two, three, four, and five? Yeah, when you will submit it. It says conditional approval revising the following items. And it lists five conditions that Mr. Sherman said.
I'll chime in because that's procedural. It would be expected and required of the applicant to provide all revisionary requests by the time of the city council meeting.
Okay, and that is when? June what?
June tenth.
Okay. Okay. Are you aware of that? Okay, good. All right.
Nothing? Okay. Tom, anything? Questions? Mr. Freeze? Come back to you? Sure. Absolutely. Terry?
No, sir.
Gail. Gail, Terry, Terry's back here. Gail's there. Gail, Terry, Terry, Gail. I'll get it. All right. Okay, so I have a couple of questions. And I'm just, has Tech dot approved the entrance concept?
We haven't received that yet. I believe that James knows that that's a requirement before they go vertical.
Is it a requirement prior to going to city council?
It will be.
It will be.
If you make it a condition.
Well, I'm, so my concern is, and I think the public who knows me, ma'am?
May I speak for a minute?
Yes, absolutely.
We have met with Tech dot on all of the ingress egress with the new expansion of two-oh-five. Mr. Martin is aware of what they have approved, which is on the far south end of Mr. Berry's property on that side of the street, and that will be their entrance into the property.
I'm confused. Oh.
Mr. Berry, across, across two-oh-five, Mr. Berry's property on the other corner, the ingress egress will be at the very far end of Mr. Berry's. When Mr. Berry's comes down at an angle, the far angle, that will be cut out.
So this concept design is not accurate? Is that the one that shows an egress here is not?
Please, please turn your microphone on. Sorry.
Oh, I'm confused. Am I missing, one of my misreading?
So we have our main drive at the front, obviously off of two-oh-five, and then a twenty-six-foot access easement connecting on both sides of the property to the north and south.
Correct. But the, this shows, this drawing shows an access easem, or access from two-oh-five to the site. And that's correct?
Yes, directly connecting to two-oh-five.
Right. And my, so my question is, has two-oh, has Tech dot approved that?
So I've gone back and forth with Tech dot numerous times, and they said they're still in coordination with you guys.
Okay. So now I'm going to go back to where I started, which is I am hesitant to send conditional approvals to city council. I prefer to send city council full-up completed approvals, only because city council, especially now that we have a new city council and they're already burdened with a number of items. And while I'm not questioning that all of these things will be addressed, I just would prefer to, my, my preference is, as a commissioner member, is to have that complete. And I think we've done that before, where we want complete packages, because we've had cases where there have been some conditional approvals that haven't always carried through. It's just a better, and it's critical for us at this point with State Highway two-oh-five expansion and State Highway two-oh-five development, commercial development, which is now starting. But this is a conversion of what prior was a residential agricultural area, now been rezoned totally commercial or business, and now will be developed to a deeper dot, lot depth. So just that's my, for my fellow commissioners, that's my hesitation. The other question I have is building materials. What's your intention there on the design? Because it's not clear that...
Predominantly masonry, in accordance with the architectural standards.
Predominantly masonry.
Well, all masonry.
All masonry. Okay. And because I'm not, what I'm concerned about is the layout of the lot and meeting. The citizens of McLendon Chism really want a country look and feel environment. And while this design might fit fine up in maybe City of Rockwall or City of Fate, I don't, I'm not sure it fits well here, because I assume these are mostly going to be, what types of build, businesses do you anticipate?
It's going to be really, it's going to vary from kind of local contractors to just small mom-and-pop businesses. Really, it spans the array of the permitted uses within the general business zoning district. It's hard to completely forecast that right now, but some of our other developments across the metroplex, it really is, it spans the gamut from small businesses to mid-sized businesses.
And they're all sixty-five-hundred square foot, except for the two fringes?
That's correct. Or sixty-fifty.
Sixty?
For the back buildings.
I'm sorry, sixty-fifty, yeah, thank you. Six thousand square feet, with the exception of the two that are facing, facing forward. Any outdoor storage for these facilities?
None.
None? Okay. How about trash that wasn't included?
We'll have dumpster enclosures included in between the buildings, and they should be located on concrete pads.
I see. I see now. And then landscaping that will be, what's, what's the standard going to be there, Mike?
They're going to be, they're going to be complying with our standard two-oh-five landscaping requirements. So they're a little bit more stringent than what the rest of the city has, but they have to do that, and they, and they don't have to do that as part of their site plan, but they do have to bring it to us, to you, and to the council prior to installation of the landscaping to make sure that it's approved. So, so it has to comply with the current codes for two-oh-five and the rest of our things. Mr. Chair, one other thing, if I, if I might.
Yeah, sure.
Your original question was whether or not they had a Tech dot permit for their driveway. They haven't presented that to us yet. And what I'm going to suggest is if the commission moves this on to the council, that they provide that concurrently with the consideration of the site plan when it gets to council. Second thing, normally, I'm going to go back to the last case, the replat. Normally with a plat, we have a preliminary and a final.
Mm-hmm. But there's not a question about plat here.
No, but I'm going to talk about water for a second. And one of the things that we normally do before a final plat is make sure that they can commit that whoever the water provider is, whether it's Black Lion, High Point, or RCH, that they provide a letter to us that commits to the ability to provide service. And that will be a commitment that we're making to the commission and the council, that they will provide that prior to the city council meeting.
Well, my, my assumption is this is RCH, is CCN?
It is.
Yes.
I was, I was making a blanket statement.
No, I understand.
That wherever we are, we're going to require that before they get a final plat, that they can provide water and fire flow.
Yeah, and, and, okay, so again, water is a sensitive subject here. I'll remind the commission, you know, water is not a consideration at this stage until we get to final plat consideration and construction.
And that's the issue, because there is no final plat.
This is a, this is a replat.
The case that we had before is a replat. So it is the last time you're going to see a plat. And what I'm committing to the commission and the council is that, like we would do if this had a final plat coming up, we're going to require that they show us that they have a will serve letter from RCH prior to consideration by the city council of the site plan.
So we don't have that today? Said letter?
I don't have it.
No? No, sir.
Okay, so again, I'm just, and I'm, this is, I'm directing this at my fellow commissioners. I'm, I am hesitant to send anything to city council that is incomplete. It feels rushed, and every time we've done that, it's resulted in additional work for city staff and, and candidly slows down a consideration at city council. So my consideration tonight would be to disapprove this and until it's complete, and, and just delay until, or table it until it's complete, whatever the right language is, to, to come back when it's complete.
So over the past several months, I've tried to, so if that's based predominantly on the Tech dot connection issue, I've...
And water, and some questions specifically about, I'm, still, I think there's some definitional points.
Mr. Chairman, when are we going to, or do we get to see a, a concept architectural plan of what the building's going to look like? Or are we approving just a concrete box?
If, if the, if the board was to provide a formal recommendation of approval, it is required that all stipulations included in the staff report and the fifth stipulation that I mentioned here tonight would be fully addressed. And I do want to point out two things really quickly. The, not the main priority points that I have emphasis on, but that I have issues with would be number three and four. Ensuring that the development and architectural design comply with the McLendon Chism Comprehensive Plan for the SH two-oh-five corridor. The current configuration of the lot does not align with what the Comprehensive Plan states. Number four, address all applicable criteria listed under quote, desired development characteristics, end quote, on page forty-two of the McLendon Chism Comprehensive Plan. It currently does not have much alignment at all with page forty-two of this plan.
You were going to say something, Mr. Freeze? Yeah, I mean, I think that the mission to bring this under discussion and comment, and, you know, just in the course of us discussing this, we went from four that were originally presented to the commission to the fifth one you added, and I've written down four more that we've stood here and discussed tonight. And that's doubling the number of recommendations. This is, I think this needs more consideration. So I think I'm somewhat on board with what the chairman is proposing. This makes more sense to push. A one-month delay, I think is applicable here.
So if, if I may, so the Tech dot issue, they, I, I tell them, or I request several months ago, hey, you know, what's the, what's the approval process? Have you worked with McLendon Chism at all? And they said, it's still ongoing, I have nothing to share with you. I mean, I can share this direct email until we have a better plan of action with McLendon Chism. So I'm kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place with trying to plan, as I tried months ago to start this process. So it may seem rushed right now, but this has been months in, in the workup, going back with them and trying to get clarity on what the process is, what the plans are for two-oh-five, to avoid this very issue.
And I understand your plight. That was just number six out of eight that I've got written down, though. That's the concern, I think, that some of us are sharing it here.
What other aspects of the site plan are non-conforming? What, what other aspects of the site plan are non-conforming?
I mean, there's, I mean, I'm not going to get into technical details about the current configuration on, in regards to six-point-one of the zoning ordinance. There are several technical details regarding line work, hatching, et cetera, things of that nature that I was going to work with you on if this was to be forward under its current layout. But the current layout is something that is almost entirely in contradiction, in my professional opinion, of the comprehensive plan that we have in place.
See, one of the, I'm sorry. One of the items on, on page forty-two, under the desired development characteristics, design should portray a country feel design, and when appropriate, a country feel design. We don't know, I don't know what, what, what buildings look like. That's, that's my question. What, what is, I don't want to look at a concrete box.
And again, this is a site plan. This is a schematical layout of how these buildings are going to lay out and interact with the road.
I understand that, but if this is supposed to be ready by the tenth, you know, if we're going to pass this on by the, to the city council on the tenth, is your architect, architect going to be able to supply? is your architect, architect gonna be able to supply a design for a country field?
We'd be ready, we, we would be ready to share elevations at that time, yeah.
Well, I, I, yeah, but see, I, and, okay, so. Part of our job, uh, and I'll remind the public and remind the commission that with the approval of the new city charter, the relationship between the city council and the planning and zoning commission has changed slightly. So, um, we. As I, as my view as a commissioner, as we send items to city council, I would like them to be cleaner and complete versus a conditional approval tonight that then allows required staff to work over the next three weeks or two weeks to resolve so that they could go to, um, city council, because here's what will happen is we go to city council, and then if the items are incomplete, city council has questions, and all of a sudden, it's a, that, that's a, it'd be much easier to have a complete package to forward to city council, just in my opinion. So.
So gaming this out a little bit, just, I'm gonna hammer on the text dot issue. I know it's one out of several. Let's say, same thing, they're still.
If text, if text out was the only issue, then I would, then, then I think we could, that would be easier to work around.
Okay.
Because that's, I mean, I understand this is now connected with other development that's gonna be underway, and, you know, there's gonna be a, um, site access, not just the direct site off two oh five, because I've, not to chime Mr. Coker a little bit, but maybe chime him a little bit. I've been lectured about how many entrances we're supposed to have along commercial developments anyway. And I don't wanna get into the, as we start to develop these lots, have proliferation of the access, access points along two oh five, so we have too many. That will, that will create its own challenges. And I understand text outs and the process with two oh five, finalization of plan and design, uh, as we start moving forward. So, anyway, that's, that's my opinion. Leave it to the remainder of the commission to make their, their decision. So, do you wanna move forward with the motion as made? Are you?
No, withdraw, sir.
Okay. So you're withdrawing. Okay, do I have a separate motion, or do you, does, do you wanna just withdraw the item and go back and work with city staff and bring it back to us in the future?
I mean, I was confident on some of the other items that we'd be able to hammer it out in, in preparation for the next, you know, council meeting, but.
The, the next coun, I will just say this, the next, and I've just talked to the mayor, so the, the next council meeting is going to be the tenth of June, and that council meeting will have a very robust agenda. I'll just, I'll just clue you in here. I think it might be better to go to our next meeting,
What is it?
Which is a week later, and then you'll go to council, so don't need to delay you going to coun, to city council really by two weeks, candidly.
It would delay going to council to the first meeting in July.
Oh, is that the next?
Because, because by the time you would take your action, our agenda would already be prepared for the twenty-fourth. We have an eight-day prior deadline to prepare the agenda, so our deadline for the agenda for the twenty-fourth of June is the day before your P and Z meeting.
Oh, goodness.
So it would delay him to the first council meeting in July.
I thought we had, um, addressed this in the past so that we staged this meeting so it could meet the statutory requirements for the agenda.
Agenda prep is eight days prior to the council meeting.
Is that the, is that the new ordinance that they?
Yes, sir.
Is that the new ordinance that this council has, or is that the prior council?
It was the old one and the, and the new one. It is, that date didn't change. What changed on the new one was a lot of the stipulations that are on.
So eight days.
But the date is, stayed the same. Now, I hesitate to say this out loud. I have executive action that I can take to do it after your meeting, but staff in the past has requested that we don't tie their hands to getting it done that fast. So that is why it would move to the first meeting in July. Because while you're worried about tying staff now and tying Mr. Martin to get everything done, you would be tying staff to make sure that everything was complete to hit that twenty-fourth date.
So it'd be the eighth of May, eighth of July. We're talking about, eighth of July is what we're talking about.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I, I'm not, I, I'm not run over by the, the dates. I mean, I, I appreciate the work that needs to be done, and I understand the burden it places on the developer, but, these are, these are important steps for us to get them right.
Isn't there two P and Zs that we need to go through technically? Is that what was laid out behind?
No, just one. Two P and Zs for?
I was told one P and Z today, and then there would be another one, and then it would go to council. I could've been wrong, but.
I'm not sure what that would be.
I've been here for one week and one day, so I'll pass it over to Mr. Coker.
We've, we've approved the plat. Let me just make sure I understand this. We've approved the plat, so that the plat action can go forward.
Yes.
We're talking the site, the site plan.
Correct.
Concept plan. That's the details, and that would be delayed to go to, you know, so the plat would be approved, and then just be a matter of moving forward on the site plan in, on the eighth of July.
Yes, and that brings up a good point. If the replat was to get final approved, the site plan, however it was to be reconfigured, it would have to be in full conformance with this approved replat, hypothetically speaking.
Well, wouldn't it anyway?
If, if the building layout was to be adjusted, and it would be a non-conformance of what is shown on the replat, that would result in anything.
So it actually could cause a problem by having the two actions together.
Most, most, if not all, developers are aware that they would have a replat approved, and that their new plans delivered to the boards, it would have to be in full conformance, but. That's all I would say to that. I mean, I, I'm not gonna speak for you, but most developers that I've worked with in the past understand that if they have a previously approved plat, and they bring a site plan at a later date, it would have to be in full conformance with the plat that was approved.
Okay, all right.
And Mr. Chair, one of, one other thing, if I may.
Sir.
The staff would make sure that any site plan that came to the commission or the council implied with the underlying plat. It, it, it's statutorily required.
I understand that, Mike. I'm just, my, it's, it's a, I want to make sure we're doing our full job, our due diligence, to lessen the burden on the city council. It's our responsibility. And, and while I don't, would never question staff's motives for taking forward a complete package, I just think that in this case, there's, like Commissioner Freeze's count, eight separate stipulations that need to be addressed. Uh, and we would just like to have that all addressed, and I just think it would be smarter to have the council can approve the replat, and then the next meeting after that, or, or two weeks after that, whenever, on the eighth, they'll approve the, uh, site plan. And we move forward, so that, I mean, that, that's, so the motion has been withdrawn, so I'd, I'd have to have a second motion, unless I'm gonna leave it up to you if you wanna.
As long as I see the eight, and I know what to go, and.
Okay.
Correct, then I'm good.
All right, very good. Well, you have, you can work with staff on, on the items. We, I think we have a good understanding what those are. Okay, thank you. I, it, it will be a better, it'll be a better output and, uh, resolution for all. Thank you for your patience. All right, so that is item, uh, seven dot three.
Uh, one thing before we go on, and, and Mr. Coker and I have had this conversation for all the years that I've been on P and Z about, uh, staff recommendations with all these following items. This is, uh, you know, a takeaway for staff, is this P and Z board, uh, likes to see complete packages, complete information, and I, we're very hesitant to, to give passage based on conditions that come. It's an extra lot of work for you guys, a lot of extra work for us. When you look, when a developer comes to you and presents something like, like this that says, take this to P and Z, can you not reject that and say, uh, we will accept this because once you have all these other items in? I mean, Mr. Coker and I have argued about this for years, and we continue to get stuff that's incomplete, but we, we're passing things with conditions. Why do you have to, why do you accept those from staff? Why do you accept these things from developers with all these conditions attached? It's just extra work for you guys. And it, and it, the, the P and Z, we, you know, we have to go through this, and like Mr. Chairman, the chairman said, how do we know that all these, sometimes these things slip by? So why accept it in the first place?
I understand that question, and I'm gonna answer you. Sometimes, things that were not apparent at the original application show themselves after we've scheduled this meeting, for instance. Now, that's not the, that's not the issue here. Peyton and I both agreed that we wanted to ask you to consider this site plan with the conditions that we had identified. Now, this was not him, it was me. Uh, so that it would give you the opportunity to flesh that out a little bit more, and, and let James in here what the commission thought about that, which you've done exactly what I thought was important. But Robert, as the vice chair, you're absolutely right. We want to bring you things that are complete. We don't wanna be negotiating from the, from the podium, and you know that I have another side of my business that, that where I'm standing on the other side trying to represent clients. And I haven't been in front of any commission that likes to negotiate a solution from the, from the podium. And our objective here, and it will continue to be our objective here, is to bring you clean, ready-to-consider applications. But sometimes I don't have the authority to, or Peyton may not have the authority, to say you can't submit that. I think our objective is to make sure that we glean through the things that are gonna be problematic, that we need to resolve before we send it off to you, and, and you have my commitment that we're gonna continue to try and do a good job bringing you complete applications. And on this one, I, I threw the man into the fire. It was me. And, and so I, I, I respect your opinion, and, and we can live, we can live with July eighth.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, with that, I'm gonna move on to item seven dot four, consider the approval of a final plat, that has a combination of both preliminary and final, to create two five-acre lots on a currently unplatted property. CAD ID is twelve, one, two, two, zero, four, twelve, two, oh, four. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to, um, staff for comment.
So, are y'all familiar with Rosemary Lane? Go out, it's the last street, well, it's not really a street, but it's the last street in McLendon Chism as you're heading out five fifty to the east. And I remember this because one of the very first things I did fifteen years ago when I started working here, we had somebody that wanted to build a house, and a guest house out there, and I put him through the wringer. At any rate, this property is immediately adjacent on the west side, and when you look at it, it's oddly shaped. And the first thing I did was to evaluate whether or not it complied with the regulations as far as plating. You know, you have to have certain depth, and you have to have a certain width. Well, depth is considered by taking the two side lot lines, adding them together, and dividing by two. So if one of them's a hundred feet and one of them's four hundred feet, you get two hundred and fifty feet out of that, or whatever the number is. And the same thing is for the depth, as, as for the width, and this, these cases both have the right lot size. They have the, the right averages, and we've evaluated this so it complies with the subject area regulations. We're recommending approval, although it's an odd-shaped plat. It, it complies with the rules.
Okay. So, thank you. It's, yes, it's, it's, um. Yeah, page, uh.
Twenty-one.
Sixteen on, in your packet.
Yeah, I've got it on page twenty-one.
Twenty-one? Oh, twenty-one, yeah, I'm sorry. It's sixteen is where it starts, all right. So, um, do I have a motion for approval?
Uh, I make a motion to approve the final plat, combination of preliminary and final, create two private lots on currently unplanted property. Uh, application is administratively complete and inconform, inconform with the McLendon Chism code ordinances.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion, a second. I'll call for the vote. Any, or wait first, any discussion? None? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Show that unanimous. That's unanimous, thank you. All right, and with that, we're gonna move on to item seven dot five, consider the approval for a change in the zoning district designated from AG Agricultural to PD Plan Development for fifty-two single-family one-acre lots. Property ID is twelve, oh, three, zero. Staff.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, uh, members of the commission, uh, this is an application to change the zoning from agricultural to a pla, plan development district. You may remember that Ag allows for a minimum lot size for residential uses of two point five acres, whereas they're requesting a plan development district that allows for fifty-two one-acre plus lots, single-family residential. This application generally conforms to the, to the, uh, comprehensive plan, and we have evaluated this in that context, and are recommending approval, and I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, okay. Um, I know that. These are the next two items. We're gonna consider these, so do you guys wanna, I know you have a presentation. Do you wanna make it now or in the next item?
Mr. Chairman, it's only one item.
Am I, am I completely confused? Yes, I am completely confused. It's been that kind of day, hasn't it, Angela? We've been, uh, we've been shorting all this out. Okay, I apologize. I apologize to the public and to my fellow commissioners. So, seven dot five. So, sir.
Yes, uh, good evening, commission. My name is Newston Virgwood Scorebird Company. Our address is eighty-two fourteen West Chester Drive, Dallas, Texas, uh, suite nine hundred, seven, five, two, two, five. Appreciate you all being here tonight, um, to hear our presentation on a project we're calling Stageboard Estates. Is there a way I can click to the next slide? Okay. Do it. There you go. All right, so tonight, we're gonna talk about, uh, Scorebird Company, who we are, uh, the subject properties, some project details, um, and show you all some representative product of these homes. So, again, next one. So we're the Scorebird Company. We're a private, uh, locally-owned, uh, development firm with over forty years of experience. We've done over a hundred and twenty development projects in more than thirty-three different, uh, cities throughout DFW. We're strictly a DFW developer. Um, we're not in Houston or Austin. We only develop in DFW. Uh, currently, we have twenty-five active projects, either in development that we're constructing right now or in build-out where homes are being sold. Uh, we have reputation for building high-quality, long-lasting communities, and our projects range from small infill locations uh, all the way up to eight hundred acre-plus master plan communities. So, uh, here's an example of a one-acre project that we've done. This one actually just right across the street from City Hall here. across the street from City Hall here, Ridge Point Estates, that one's about 99 acres, we developed 83 one-acre lots, the home builders in that are Windsor Homes, which is our sister home building company, and Toll Brothers, and like I said, we successfully entitled to closing that one in May of last year, and currently finishing up development, and as you can see, Toll's model's going up right now. Next one, uh, there you go, so this one is Los Berisus at Stone Creek, this one's over in Sunnyvale, Texas, it's about 110 acres, we developed 82 one-acre lots, Windsor, Drees, and Kindred Homes are the home bu, are home building partners, this one we did in 2021, and we're currently selling homes right now, so that one's in sellout. Next one, please, this one is an older project that we did back in 2006 in Lucas and Hurst Estates, which was about 40 acres, we developed 31 one-acre lots, and our building partner was Paul Taylor Homes. So the subject property, you can go to the next one, so the subject property that we have here today is located off of Dow Road, it's about 67.21 acres and currently zoned in the agricultural district. Next, so the future land use plan for this, designation for this property is master plan community, which in the comprehensive plan calls for developments with primary single-family uses and one-acre minimum lot sizes for residential subdivisions. So Sage Wood Estates' development plan will consist of 52 single-family lots, these will be one-acre minimum lot sizes, homes will be 3,000, 3,000 minimum square foot homes, and we'll have a mandatory HOA that will be responsible for maintaining all the perimeter fencing and landscaping located in common area lots. So to give you all an idea about our screening plan, located off of Dow Road, we'll have a 20-foot landscape buffer, which will include a four-foot decorative metal fencing with masonry columns every 150 feet, similar to what you see over there on Ridge Point Estates, we'll have an eight-foot concrete walking trail along Dow, and we'll have landscaping. We'll also have two entry monuments located at our two entrances off of Dow Road, we'll have four-foot decorative metal fencing in blue there to the north and south that backs up to those homes, and then on the south side, which we have been working with our neighbor on, is we're gonna have rolling berms with evergreens planted every 20 feet on center. So here's some representative product for y'all, you can just kinda go through this. So homes in Sage Wood Estates are supposed to range, like I mentioned, 3,000 to 5,500 square feet, and our projected starting home price in these is gonna be the high 800,000s and going up into the 1.2 million's, really, a price point depending on options picked by the home buyer when they go to purchase the home. So in closing, Sage Wood Estates will be a sustainable neighborhood with the intent to establish a community in line with the future land use plan, provide a vibrant, long-lasting community that blends seamlessly with the surrounding environment, promote a very desirable, high-quality, one-acre lot product, and be a source of pride for the first future residents and a shining example of what McLendon Chisholm has to offer. Again, I really appreciate your time tonight, letting us present this to you, we respectfully ask for your support here for any questions you all may have.
Any questions from the commission? No? Water, who's your, who's the provider gonna be?
Water provider? Blackland.
Blackland.
Yeah.
Thank you, okay, all right, um, and you, staff, any further comments? Nothing? All right, so I'll ask for a motion for approval.
I make a motion to approve the change in zoning district designation from AG to PD for the development of 52 single-family one-acre lots, application complies with city comprehensive plan, future land use plan, and zoning regulations of the city.
I'll second it. All right, I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, show that unanimous, thank you, appreciate it, guys, good luck with the project. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item seven point six, consider the approval of a final plat that provides for the creation of one lot on 2.275 acres of land generally located south of southern city limits in the ETJ and south of the intersection of FM 548 on the frontage of State Highway 205. Staff.
So this is a preliminary and final plat for a, a commercial property that's across the street from the airport down there, we've evaluated this in the context of the subdivision regulations and our interlocal agreement with Rockwall County, and we've worked with Rockwall County to ensure that the plat meets their requirements as well as ours, the issue that I have is I, I don't know if Mr. McCollum has a text op permit yet, but I did not put that as a condition because he can't get, without permission from the text op, which is outside of our jurisdiction, he can't build anything, so, I didn't think it was an issue for your consideration, but I thought I'd touch on it because we spent some time earlier.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Other than that, this, this plat meets our requirements, meets the requirements of the county, and we're recommending approval.
Okay, um, nothing further, is the applicant here? Which is, no?
I don't see.
All right, uh, we'll move to mo, uh, motion.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
All right, I have a second, I have a second, I motion a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay, show that unanimous, all right, and with that, we have completed our agenda for this evening, move on to agenda item eight, I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, very good, uh, so I am moving to adjourn this meeting.[1608.96]